Before we begin the board meeting, Jada Davis, an eighth grade student at JB Martin Middle School, will lead us in a moment of reflection. Jada is an honor roll student who was a Student of the Year nominee. She participates in cheerleading at JB Martin and also enjoys helping others at school and in the community. She is a member of the historic Bethlehem Baptist Church where she works with younger kids in Sunday school. She enjoys cooking with her grandmother and shopping with her pa-pa and mom-mom. After the moment of reflection, Board Member Dennis Nocan will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand at this time.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come here today to say thank you. Thank you for waking us up each morning. Thank you for watching over us as we travel to work in school each day. Thank you for protecting us through these challenging times that we had to face together as a community. Our trust is in you, Father God, and we give thanks to you for your love and protection. Please continue to watch and protect the people of this parish. Continue to give the students nothing but the strive and motivation needed for academic success. Continue to give these teachers and staff the ability to make the schools of this parish places of knowledge and wisdom. Lastly, continue to watch over each and every person in this room. Forever in your name, forever in Jesus' name, amen.
From the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Jada, for that moment of reflection and best wishes to you as you move on to Hanville High School next year and in your future endeavors. And also thank you, Mr. Nocan, for leading the pledge. This meeting of the Board of St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, March 16th, is called to order. Welcome all. For the record, we have seven of aid board members in attendance. Mrs. Melinda Bernard from District Two is absent this evening. Also in attendance this evening is our Superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and Mrs. Shelley Babino, who is the Executive Secretary for the Superintendent and the Board. Our first item of business is Item 2.01, A Resolution in Memory of Mr. Earl Seminow, and I'd ask Mr. Art O'Quinn to present that resolution.
I'd be honored to read a resolution for my coach and my friend, Mr. Earl Seminow. Whereas Mr. Earl Seminow served as a health and physical education teacher for 22 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board here and expresses to the family of the late Mr. Earl Seminow its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the March 16, 2022 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Seminow's family. And I move adoption.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes, and at this time, Mr. O'Quinn and Mr. Savoy will join the Superintendent in presenting the resolution to the family. The next item is Item 2.02, 2022 School Library Month Proclamation, and I ask Mr. John Smith to present that proclamation.
On behalf of two, Mr. President, 2022 School Library Month Proclamation. Whereas April 2022 has been designated the 37th Annual National School Library Month, and whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge, and whereas school libraries provide materials that will develop library, cultural, aesthetic appreciation, and ethical standards, and whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of religion, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups, and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture, and whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure, and whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served, and whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go, and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, hereby proclaim the month of April as School Library Month and call upon school administrators, teachers, students, and community members of St. Charles Parish to recognize and support the contribution of school libraries. I move for its adoption.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like at this moment for Mr. Matt Spitz, Supervisor, Curriculum Instruction, to come to the podium to introduce our library technicians and assistants that are in attendance tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Ortling and School Board Members for proclaiming April School Library Month. Today's students can access information easier and faster than ever before. Cell phones and Chromebooks provide the instant answers students crave. Unfortunately, these instant answers are not always the best answers. Our library staff teach students to analyze information, and our next-generation school libraries contain a wide variety of eBooks, databases, and reading platforms to ensure our students are future-ready. The 2022 School Library Month theme, "Connect With Your Library," exemplifies the next-generation libraries found in our schools. Please help me recognize our school library staff. Please come forward when your name is called and remain in the front for a group photo. Starting with our elementary schools, Ms. Lacy Doucet from Alamon's Elementary. Allison Feeney, Ethel Scheffner Elementary. Kathleen Ganain and Tammy Shasson from Lakewood Elementary. Natalie Campo and Sierra Stoney from Mimosa Park Elementary. New Sarpy Elementary, Nicole Jacob. Norco Elementary, Alberta Dunn. From RJ Vial Elementary, we have Ms. Yvette Drawn. And from St. Rose, we have Claire Whitaker and Lynette Benedict. From Albert Cammon Middle School, we have Ms. Judith Jobear. From Destrehan High School, we have Jennifer Casanova and Maria Fontino. And finally, from Hanville High School, Belinda Subcek and Anna Pedone.
Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion carries. The next item is Item 3.01, Board and Superintendent's Recognition.
We'll begin with students. Hanville High School student was named to an LMEA All-State Band Ensemble, Connor Cunningham. And Connor, you can go ahead and stay up there because you're also our next recipient. School system students were named to an LMEA District Honor Band. From Hanville High School, Connor Cunningham. Sarah Gassen. From JB Martin Middle School, Kylie Mader. Nathaniel Price. Edmund Rodriguez. Joseph Skiba. And from RK Smith Middle School, Isla Lyon. School system students were named to an LMEA District Honor Choir. Hanville High School, Micah Lammers. Anna Lenata. Tenez Pierre. From Lakewood Elementary School, Maggie Keller. Peyton Robichaud. Drew Tuck. Zoe Winstell. From JB Martin Middle School, Brayden Deschawn. Addison Ogeron. Craig White. And from RK Smith Middle School, J.C. Harris. Employees. Central Office employee received the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, Stephanie Gullidge. Luling Elementary School employee was selected by the Louisiana Art Education Association as its nominee for the 2022 National Elementary Educator, Kelly Williams-Morantine. Head Start employees received Agenda for Children grants totaling $29,106, Kim Butler. And Kalisha Washington.
On behalf of the Board, congratulations to the students and employees recognized here this evening. For the students, it is inspiring to see you take advantage of the many opportunities in the arts and achieve excellence. It is in part because of that excellence that we're recognized as a AAA district with emphasis on academics, the arts, and athletics. For the employees, thank you for the dedication to your craft, and you bring honor and distinction to the district. You may have noticed we recognize Ms. Gullidge, and I think it's worth noting that on Sunday evening, I think Mrs. Gullidge's son, Kevin, is going to be on American Idol, so you might want to tune into that. We will now take a recess to allow those who would like to leave to do so, and then we'll reconvene shortly to conduct the business portion of the meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session to conduct the business portion of the meeting. The first, Item 4.01, Minutes for the February 14, 2022 Committee Meetings and February 16, 2022 Regular Board Meeting. Move, approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nocan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Item 4.02, Bid Acceptance, Hanville High School Building D Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The architect's construction budget for the Hanville High School Building D Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is $2,300,000. Bids were received from four contractors on Thursday, February 24, 2022. One bid was deemed non-responsive. The lowest base bid, including alternate number one, alternate number two, and alternate number three, was received from Taylor Enterprises LLC in the amount of $1,814,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid, including alternate number one, alternate number two, and alternate number three, from Taylor Enterprises LLC, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, that move that we approve, accepting the lowest base bid, including alternate number one, number two, and number three, submitted by Taylor Enterprises LLC for the Hanville High School Building D Hurricane Ida Damage Restoration Project?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Item 4.03, Bid Acceptance, New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The architect's construction budget for the New Sarpy Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is $1,800,000. Bids were received from four contractors on Thursday, February 24, 2022. One bid was deemed non-responsive. The lowest base bid, including alternate number one, was received from Dynamic Construction Group LLC, doing business as Dynamic Group LLC, in the amount of $1,618,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid, including alternate number one, from Dynamic Construction Group LLC, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of this item.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion carries. We have a similar item for Ethel Scheffner. Item 4.04, Bid Acceptance, Ethel Scheffner Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The architect's construction budget for the Ethel Scheffner Elementary School Roof Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is $759,444. Bids were received from two contractors on Thursday, February 24, 2022. The lowest base bid was received from Dynamic Construction Group LLC, doing business as Dynamic Group LLC, in the amount of $647,481.15. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid from Dynamic Construction Group LLC, doing business as Dynamic Group LLC, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of this item as you described in background rationale?
Second. Motion by Mr. Nocan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.05, Bid Acceptance, Professional Learning Center Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The architect's construction budget for the Professional Learning Center Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is $800,000. Bids were received Bids were received from one contractor on Thursday, March 3, 2022. The lowest base bid, including alternate number one, was received from Ellison Builders LLC in the amount of $890,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid, including alternate number one, from Ellison Builders LLC, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of this agenda item as you described in the background rationale, with the notation that this item came in a little over budget, but it's balanced off by the previous three which came in under budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.06 Bid Acceptance, Destran High School Building A Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The architect's construction budget for the Destran High School Building A Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is $4,200,000. Bids were received from four contractors on Thursday, March 3, 2022. The lowest base bid was received from T E H Enterprise LLC in the amount of $4,164,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid from T E H Enterprise LLC, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid submitted by T E H Enterprise LLC for the Destran High School Building A Hurricane Ida Damage Restoration Project. Again, this is another project that has come in under budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? That motion passes. The last item we have relative to Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration this evening is item 4.07 Bid Acceptance, Destran High School Building B Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration. The architect's construction budget for the Destran High School Building B Hurricane Ida Damages Restoration Project is $442,000. Bids were received from five contractors on Thursday, March 3, 2022. One bid was deemed non-responsive. The lowest base bid was received from J A Jack Julius Jr. Incorporated in the amount of $385,635. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid from J A Jack Julius Jr. Incorporated, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid submitted by J A Jack Julius Jr. Incorporated for the Destran High School Building B Hurricane Ida Damage Restoration Project, again at a cost of $385,635, making this the fifth out of six projects that have come in under budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.08 Requests for Proposals: Emergency Construction of Building Components and Our Grounds. The district's Hurricane Disaster Preparedness and Recovery Plan includes a recommendation by FEMA to request proposals for emergency services. These services will assist the district in expediting recovery from a disaster. The required documents to request proposals for emergency construction of building components and our grounds have been completed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for emergency construction of building components and our grounds.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.09 Requests for Proposals: Emergency Janitorial and Restoration Services. The district's Hurricane Disaster Preparedness and Recovery Plan includes a recommendation by FEMA to request proposals for emergency services. These services will assist the district in expediting recovery from a disaster. The required documents to request proposals for emergency janitorial and restoration services have been completed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for proposals for emergency janitorial and restoration services.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.10 Summer Food Service Program. The Summer Food Service Program is a child nutrition program funded by the United States Department of Agriculture. Its primary purpose is to provide nutritious meals to needy children 18 years of age and younger during the months when schools are not in session. School communities qualify if 50% or more of the students are approved for free or reduced meals. Once the required percentage of eligible children is documented, any child may eat at no charge regardless of economic status. The sponsoring agency assumes financial and administrative responsibility and is also responsible for operating the program within federal and state guidelines. The St. Charles Parish Council, through its Department of Community Services, has accepted the responsibility in St. Charles Parish. Plans are being made to use the kitchen facilities at Carver Early Learning Center and Albert Cameron Middle School. The program will operate for the period of June 6, 2022, through July 14, 2022. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the use of the two cafeteria facilities for the Summer Food Service Program.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.11 Revisions to Policy 5.05 Use of School Facilities for a First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy 5.05 Use of School Facilities, revisions were required in order to reflect changes in current practices and technology. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move approval?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.12 Revisions to Policy 4.05 Nepotism for a Second Reading and Adoption. During the 2021 session of the Louisiana Legislature, Act 199 was approved, requiring an exception to the ethics code to allow immediate family of a school board member or superintendent to be employed as a certified school bus operator. After reviewing current law, additional revisions were required. Revisions to Policy 4.05 Nepotism reflect these new requirements. Board Policy 4.05 Nepotism was accepted for a first reading at the meeting of the Board on Wednesday, February 16, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Policy 4.05 Nepotism for its second reading and adoption.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.13 Coordinator of Instructional Technology Job Description Revisions. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the Board. Numerous job description revisions are being recommended for the position of the coordinator of instructional technology. These revisions align with the up-to-date needs of the district and schools. This item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal A of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the coordinator of instructional technology job description revisions.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.14 Insurance Technician Position. St. Charles Parish Public Schools is transitioning to a self-funded health insurance plan that requires additional processes be implemented through the Risk Management Department. These processes include, but are not limited, to reviewing check registers and bank reconciliations, monitoring claims activity and overall performance of employee benefits, monitoring reporting requirements, monitoring customer service, claims, and inquiries, and facilitating claims review of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Self-Insured Program. In order to efficiently support these processes, an insurance technician position is needed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval? Mr. President, I move that we approve the insurance technician position.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.15 Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve personnel items presented to the Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.16 Proposal Acceptance USDA Commodity Processing. In order to have the best quality food items at the best price, the district sought proposals to process USDA commodities. The Request for Proposals opening was held on January 14, 2022. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the USDA commodity processing proposal.
I'll second, at a cost of, just included, a cost of $382,000.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.17 Selection of a Firm to Conduct a Salary Study. A Request for Proposals was issued by the district to find a qualified firm to conduct a comprehensive study of the district's compensation system. Proposals were reviewed from two firms on January 27, 2022. A committee was formed to evaluate the proposals and interview representatives of the firms. The committee scored the two firms using criteria listed in the RFP. The higher scoring firm was Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated, and the evaluation committee recommends that Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated be hired to conduct the district's salary study. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goals B and C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the selection of Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated to conduct a salary study for the district at a cost of between $128,250 and $148,250.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? That motion passes. The final business item is item 4.18 Accounts Payable for the Month of February 2022. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, March 14, 2022, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Entertainer. of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Entertainer motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of February twenty-twenty-two in the amount of eleven million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakian, seconded by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Moving on to closing items, Item five point zero one, Standing Committee Reports. Any chair of a standing committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, Capitol Improvements Committee met on Monday, the fourteenth. Covered ten items. Two of those items I'll cover first, those were committee meeting only. First one was a high school field light update for Mr. Rome and Mr. Rogers. The second item that was committee meeting only was emergency project management proposals. Items brought to the table this evening were, several of them were Ida, Hurricane Ida damage-related restoration projects. There was a Hornfield High School Building D, Usarpi Elementary Hurricane Roof Damage, Ethel Scheffner Roof Damage, Professional Learning Center, Deshran High School Building A, and Deshran High School Building B. We also took a proposal for, or requested for a proposal, emergency construction of building components and our grounds. Last item that we discussed on Monday was the Summer Food Services Program. All items that were brought to the table this evening were approved by the Board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakian.
Mr. President, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met on Monday night, and we had our monthly legal update. And then afterwards, we had our risk manager, Ms. Gray, go across some timelines and some challenges that we're going to be facing with our property insurance renewals. That was committee only. We discussed some different options and some things we're going to have to do because of things everybody are experiencing with, you know, the storm that happened and so forth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Okwen.
Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting met on Monday. As we discussed, with revisions to Policy five point zero five, the use of school facilities for its first reading, revisions to Policy four point zero five, Nepotism for its second reading, the Coordinator of Instructional Technology Job Description Revisions, the Insurance Technician Position, and Personnel Items which were dealt with by the Board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Savoie.
Mr. President, the Legislative Committee met on Monday night. And as you know, the legislature began its session last Monday. The Legislative Committee, through the efforts of Ms. Stevie Covetta, we have compiled a list of all of those pieces of legislation that have been presented to the legislature that relate to education. The superintendent has assigned to various members of his staff to track those bills and to begin reporting to the Board on the impact of those bills that will have direct impact on public education, particularly as it relates to St. Charles Parish. As you know, the Board will be attending the day at the legislature with LSBA on the twenty-fifth of, I believe it's the twenty-fifth of April. At that time, the Board members will have an opportunity to meet with legislators and present to legislators our feelings and position on many of those bills that they will be considering. In addition to that, we will be scheduling meetings with our local legislative delegation for the purpose of indicating to our local legislative delegations what their position is relative to St. Charles Parish School Board on many of those bills and how this school district will be impacted by many of those bills that will be presented and will be considered. So for the next three months, we're going to be pretty active, actively involved in looking at what's going on in Baton Rouge and making some determination as to how it's going to impact us, not only financially, but how it's going to impact us in all areas of our operation.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And the Finance and Audit Committee meeting met on Monday, March fourteenth, and we covered three items. And all three of those came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. Those three items were the Proposal Acceptance for the USDA Commodity Processing, selection of a firm to conduct a salary study, and accounts payable for the month of February two thousand and twenty-two. Item five point zero two, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Ordley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Seniors and retesters will begin taking LEAP twenty-twenty-five assessments on April twenty-first. All high school students enrolled in LEAP courses will take these LEAP assessments May sixteenth through May eighteenth. All high school students not taking LEAP assessments will participate in asynchronous learning on these days. More information will be communicated by the high schools. The St. Charles Parish Lead Agency Early Childhood Community Network is launching March as the kickoff month for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three enrollment of children birth through four years old. Interested parents and families are encouraged to complete network-coordinated enrollment applications used for all ages in all nine community centers and the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Head Start Four-Year-Old Programs. Parents may contact their programs of choice for information and assistance. Coordinated enrollment applications may be found at the School Board website under Services, School Board Central Office Reception Desk, nine community early childhood centers, and two Head Start locations, churches and community social services organizations. Parents and families are also invited to attend the Annual Early Childhood Enrollment Outreach Event on Saturday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, from nine a.m. until noon at the School Board Central Office. This event will include displays highlighting the network's nine community centers and the Head Start Four-Year-Old Programs. Network enrollment applications will be available and assistance provided for interested parents to complete applications. There will be lots of fun activities to engage children while parents get to meet staff from various early childhood programs. As an athletics update, Homville Girls Soccer were undefeated district champions. They finished the regular season with a thirteen, eight, and one record and entered the state playoffs as a seventeenth seed. The Lady Tigers defeated number sixteen Live Oak in the first round of the playoffs. They fell to number one Dominican in the second round. Homville Boys Soccer finished the regular season with a twelve, six, and three record. The Tigers entered the state playoffs as a twenty-first seed. The Tigers fell to number twelve Denham Springs in the first round. Homville Girls Basketball Team had a record of seventeen and fourteen. They were seeded number twenty-four in the state playoffs and fell to West Monroe in the first round of the playoffs. Homville Basketball Team had a record of seventeen and eleven. They were the number nineteen, they were seeded number nineteen in the state playoffs and fell to East Ascension in the first round of the playoffs. Homville Boys Wrestling, Brendan Chasson, finished fifth in the state in his weight class for wrestling. And Deshran Basketball Team had a record of twenty-five and five and were named district champions. They were seeded ninth in the state playoffs and defeated Santa Mont in the first round, but fell to Nacogdoog Central in the second round of the playoffs. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ordley.
Motion adjourned.
Before you adjourn, Mr. President, the Board is entering into a phase of construction, reconstruction. And during this phase, as a result of Hurricane Ida, we will, we received tremendous amount of damage to all of our facilities. As a result of that, the Board is in the process of issuing many, many contracts for repair and renovations and that sort of thing, which is the expenditure of a considerable sum of money. Thanks to Mr. White and his department, we are provided with a report monthly on the expenditure of dollars and the recovery of dollars from our insurance program. Tonight, we approved the number of contracts and what have you. For the benefit of the public, what I'd like to ask the superintendent, if he would include in his report at the end of each board meeting a comparison of what we are recovering from the insurance company in relation to what we are expending, we are expending. I believe the recent, most recent report showed that we have recovered approximately fifty percent of the total dollars that we have to spend to get our schools back up and running. That includes all of the roofing and all of the other kinds of things that have to be done. But I believe that during this phase or period that we find ourselves in, it would be interesting to report that to the public that we are recovering X percent or X number of dollars from the insurance company, and we are spending additional dollars, okay? And separate that out from, because we're going to be going out for a bond issue very soon, and some of that may be related to some of the work, and some of it may not. It may be work that we needed to upgrade the system anyway. So if you were to include that in your report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith. So I'm clear that I will include as part of my superintendent's report a summary of what is currently incurred as far as damages and restoration of buildings due to Hurricane Ida, as well as projected costs, and where those, the revenues and the proceeds from the insurance claims have come back. And I'll report that every month, just as I do every week with our weekly report.
Right, and the weekly report.
Yes, sir. And I'd just like to note as well, you know, this Board's tremendous leadership in the past has set us up to be able to recover from this storm in a financially sound way, that we are able to immediately go out for bid for these projects and not interrupt the learning. And obviously, a credit to our Capitol Improvements crew, our risk manager, Ms. Darnisha Gray, for tracking those things. So certainly a collective effort of a lot of people, but certainly the Board's leadership in placing the appropriate insurance on our buildings has led to us being financially sound moving forward and a projection of where we will be once all these buildings are restored.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Smith and Dr. Ordley.
Move adjourned.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Stand adjourned.